We're going to move on to our 6:15 item, our three o'clock item, which is A. Consideration of staff review of Sonoma Clean Power Joint Powers Agreement. B. Conceptual introduction of draft enabling resolutions and ordinance for the county to join Sonoma Clean Power and possible direction to staff. No action will be taken on part B. Discussion and possible direction to staff only. With that, I'll turn it over to our administrative office for any presentation.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. First, I want to thank you and all who attended and engaged in the Tuesday, September 30, joint workshop with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport and Sonoma Clean Power. It was a valuable session and great to see the governing bodies of Lake County come together. The memo attached to your agenda today includes observations made by County Council on review of the Sonoma Clean Power Joint Powers Agreement and some responsive comments received. Sonoma Clean Power has additionally committed to robustly consulting with tribes prior to commencement of service and reinforced their expectation that Lake County feedback would influence the geozones processes moving forward should Lake County choose to participate. For clarity, no specific Lake County geothermal projects have been proposed by Sonoma Clean Power to date. Today's item seeks to gather any remaining questions that your board has surrounding Sonoma Clean Power. Staff's goal is for your board to have the information that you need ahead of potential decision-making on Tuesday, October 21. At members of your board's request, draft enabling documents, those that would be required to provide an alternative to power generation with PG&E through Sonoma Clean Power and participate in the geozone, were likewise attached to your board's agenda for your review and for public inspection. No action will be taken on any of those documents today, but we're happy to gather your questions and receive any appropriate direction to staff. While Sonoma Clean Power leadership are unable to attend today's meeting, they have committed to providing answers to any informational questions from your board as soon as possible. And you will recall key Sonoma Clean Power staff have made 17 trips to Lake County in recent months to raise awareness of their programs and offerings. You'll also be aware, last week, the Clear Lake City Council voted two to three against implementation, and the existing offer of service envisioned all Lake County jurisdictions moving forward together. Sonoma Clean Powers Board is currently scheduled to meet next November 6. You will appreciate strong support, however, for participation from your board could prove pivotal to an alternative offer of service being extended by Sonoma Clean Powers Board. And staff therefore want to be sure to route any remaining important questions and input members of your board have and get quality answers. And I'd like to now also turn this presentation over to Benjamin Rickelman, Economic Development focused Deputy County Administrative Officer, to provide some further background and analysis.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Put together this presentation, building off the September 30th workshop. This is some additional thoughts regarding the economic impact of geothermal, specifically the permitting process and the discussion with AB 531 and the Energy Commission opt-out program. And then I think it's also important to take into context PG&E's plans in the upcoming years since, well, either joining Sonoma Clean Power or not joining Sonoma Clean Power will have a major impact on the county. So I thought it would be useful, and it wasn't really covered in the working session, just the economic importance of geothermal with Lake County. I think an important thing to emphasize is that it provides strong economic mobility and stable, high-quality employment. A lot of technician positions kind of range from the mid $60,000s all the way up to $110, $120,000, and a lot of those positions do not require a four-year degree. A lot of, and then almost all positions in the geothermal field, engineers, management is six figures and above. Another thing I think is important to note is of any industry, you can't say it's guaranteed, but it's relatively immune from recessions, so it's a very stable form of employment. And I think that's important to take into context with regards to Lake County, particularly with, you know, we have a fairly high poverty rate, about 50% higher than the national rate, and a lower median household income, and also a lower college attainment rate. So those positions that offer strong pay and are stable, but don't require a four-year degree or higher are of high value for Lake County. Another thing, I think, just to delve into a little bit more, is geothermal is a capex-intensive industry, so Calpine is currently the county's largest taxpayer. We've actually seen just a noticeable bump with the county revenue with their incremental project where they're adding 25 megawatts. So both on the property tax and the sales tax, it's really important. Another thing which isn't up there, but is frequently a point of importance in economic development is what we call tradable firms or export-oriented firms. So basically, firms, businesses that are bringing cash into the local jurisdiction. There's only a finite amount to spending power here in Lake County, so anything that can inject capital locally is of strong importance and has strong multiplier effects. And then I think there was this paper recently issued from a Stanford professor that was trying to model out future geothermal projects in California, and he had kind of a medium estimated range of 130 to 200 million per project. So just to go a little bit more detail and build off the permitting discussion that happened on the 30th. So for locally permitted geothermal projects, if the county was to join Sonoma Clean Power, all the regulatory power would still be with the county, which includes if it was going through the locally permitting process, it would still have to get a major use permit. So any project would come to the Board of Supervisor for approval, and it would still have to go through CEQA for the production side of the permitting process. I do think it's advisable, either way, how this develops is for development agreements, if there was the county joining Sonoma Clean Power, that the county would still control development agreements for geothermal projects. And because they're so large and unique, I think the county should be crafting what the community benefits could be. And Lake County's already benefited a lot from that, from the geothermal royalties that have had a strong impact, are enabled several different community projects throughout Lake County. So there was a bit of discussion regarding AB 205, especially with AB 531, that, so for context, just a second. So AB 205 came into effect in 2022, and that's, and it's a law now, and it allows geothermal projects over 50 megawatts to participate in the state permitting process. What AB 531 would allow is projects under 50 megawatts, and it's just not geothermal, and it's actually never been used for geothermal. I think that's important to note. I've, through a few conversations, I know several geothermal companies have looked at AB 205, and none of them have gone down that path. I think there's a few reasons for that. It's just kind of a level of competency with Energy Commission. They have a very large mandate, and I don't think they have the staffing capacity to do it. Only nine projects have submitted there, primarily solar and battery storage systems, and they've only processed one. They have a mandate from the law that they're supposed to do an EIR in 270 days, and they're not doing it. So I think a lot of companies in the clean energy space are deciding to go with the local permitting process, and that's what all geothermal projects in California have done since the law's been enacted. And then another area I want to cover, which didn't really get into on the 30th, but I think is important to take into context, especially when thinking about rates down the road. So the PG&E president has come out and said rates will be stable or even decreased through 2027, which definitely could be true, but how the utility process works for rates, for customer rates, is primarily driven by capital expenditure. And there's significant outlays that have been recently announced. So there's a 15% increase in PG&E's capital expenditure program that came out last week compared to the previous one. And then another thing that I think is important, it's a bit wonky, but utilities, they call it the total assets. So this is the part of the rate base that they can use for calculating rates, and that's going to be projected to be a 53% increase in 2030. And then PG&E also submitted a request to, for their ceiling, for their total return of equity, which also can impact customer rates. So there's all these dynamics in play where we're already the second highest rates in the country, and there's these major expenditures that ultimately customer rates finance. There's also this national dynamic of this massive investment in data centers primarily fueled by AI. So currently in the PG&E service territory, they serve about two gigawatts of data centers, and there's about 10 in the queue, 10 gigawatts. Now, not all that's going to be built, that's just kind of how data center queues work, but a decent amount will. About 35 million in data center capex happened in 2024, and about 45 million is projected for this year. We could get into triple digits. Now, at some point, like the railroads in the 18th century or the Internet archive, Internet infrastructure in the 90s and 2000s, it eventually subsides, but there's this major energy demand coming down the pipeline. And then just in conjunction with the Flashes Project, CCA's have expressed interest in the Flashes Project. It does possibly increase the likelihood of a suitable off-taker that would be a good partner with the county. So just touching on possible economic development benefits of the geothermal industry overall and its importance for the county's economy, and then specifically the county government's tax base, kind of the nuances of AB 205, and then what we all face with PG&E in the That's all I have at the moment.
Anything further, Matthew?
Not much further, just wanted to, just say we really look forward to your board's discussion and gathering and routing your remaining questions, as well as hearing from members of the public gathered here today.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for comments. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you for this. I had a few private discussions with Sonoma Clean Power. I guess I was identified as a concerned individual, so they wanted to meet with me so we could have better discussions. And I'm appreciative of the information that County Council was able to put together. In hindsight, I wish we had postponed our September 30th meeting so that we can all kind of have a legal review of this at the same time, since this is a all-or-nothing situation for all of us to have that in our hands for the discussion would have been really valuable, but we're here today. And one of the things, and I hope County Council doesn't take this the wrong way, but one of the things that it starts off in the memo is delete the line that says County of Sonoma and the Sonoma County Water Agency. I think it's number one. The title attached document should delete the reference. The reference is the valid reference. The JPA is Sonoma County and Sonoma Water. They are the parties to this JPA. Everyone else is just a participant, which is a completely different role that the parties play. And so I think that leads to more confusion for me, because I never heard of Sonoma County Water being involved in this. Maybe I should have done better homework, but the information that I had, the discussions I had, never recognized Sonoma Water as being one of the owners of this JPA. And again, I've had two private conversations with SCP, and we've had two public conversations thus far, and this is our third public conversation. They're not here today, which is too bad. And that just leaves me to pause. What I don't know is what I don't know, and what I do know is already still concerning me as to what's right in front of me. I've been having great conversations with Mr. Rothstein. I really appreciate you being a sound wall and devil's advocate and more, just to keep me thinking and asking more questions, and that's greatly appreciated. But I feel what I have in front of me is the same situation that we dealt with in the Potter Valley project, which is, here's the big kids' table, you're not invited, here's the little kids' table, this is all you're going to get. And I'm not sure that, I mean, I looked at some of the JPAs that we're a part of. And the area planning council, put together in the '70s, was simply Lakeport and the county, here's how we're going to separate it out for equal seats and equal voice and equal concerns. And then in 1986, it was amended because the city of Clear Lake was formed in 1980, and here's an equal seat, and here's how we're going to restructure. There is no restructure. It's nine members that represent Sonoma County, two members that represent Mendocino County. We discussed that. There seemed to not necessarily be much of a interest in a proposal to more equalize the ability. And as I mentioned, Cloverdale, Sebastopol, Sonoma, City of Sonoma, all of those have 10,000 or less individuals in their cities, and yet they have three separate voting capabilities, plus the county, we're only being offered two votes, or two members, to be able to vote, because the voting shares are slightly different. I just, I feel like this is, there are some pros, but the way that Sonoma Clean Power has presented themselves, I keep turning over stones with new information, and I feel like I don't want to go into something that I find out somewhere later where I'm stuck in a 20-year relationship that maybe this wasn't a good idea? And if I'm going to go into a 20-year relationship, as they keep telling me that this is, maybe this should have been presented in a more transparent way? And one of the things that really tripped me up was, had we not asked a question about tribal land, we would be saying yes and forcing our tribal partners, our tribal neighbors, to do something that maybe they didn't even know was going to be put on them. And granted, maybe it seems simple to be able to opt out of things, which is what their letter says that they will do, but that's also saying, yeah, you'll be all right. And it's just, it's not, it doesn't feel like the, like they cared much about our relationships that we have here if we're going to affect a relationship without even knowing that we're going to have an impact on our partners and our neighbors, and why that wasn't said to us. Yes, state law says they don't have to, that doesn't mean you don't do it. You don't have a conversation, or you don't bring in everybody that will be impacted. So I mean, last week, I spoke with Matthew, Mr. Rothstein, and said, you know what, I see a little bit more pros than I do cons. I'd rather be in a better place rather than not. But as I see Sonoma Water being at the very top, I have seen them in action, and I struggle to be able to say that I have trust. This is a 20-year trust. This is not a JPA position. This is a mutual shareholder of sorts with a vote on certain things. And we can position ourselves because we, maybe we want projects to come from Sonoma Clean Power, and we're going to see five or six other agencies coming along with other power projects dealing with geothermal that have nothing to do with Sonoma Clean Power, and we can't stop those, and we're just going to have to deal with it one at a time. So just the information that's in front of us, where the limited authority is held in the hands of Sonoma County Water, where again, there's a separation between what parties, what's a party and what's a participant, and the voting shares, I just, I don't feel respected in the entry point of this process, and I'm struggling to move forward. And so Lake County doesn't deserve a seat at the little kids' table.
Go ahead, Supervisor Picek.
Yeah, so thank you for putting together the slide deck and talking about the geothermal and the impact. But I think what's more important is we're talking about the choice for the utility, for the people that live here and for the businesses. And when we look at, when you showed those slides with the investments that PG&E is going to make and the projected rate hikes, that's going to hit our people really hard. So thank you for pulling that together, because we really need to keep that front of mind as we're going forward with this. I don't think I entirely agree with Supervisor Sabatier. I think there are some ambiguities in the JPA agreement. I think County Council has brought some of these up. I appreciate them in the memo, but in our conversations, the sections are just highlighted, and I'm wondering if we could go over them one by one, because I don't really know why you pulled them out and what the concern is. And in our conversation, you explained it to me, but I think it would be helpful for our board and the public to understand where your areas of concern are and what level of concern they are, and if we can work through some of those ambiguities and look at the risk that maybe, the risk levels that you're considering.
Sure, thank you Supervisor Picek. So the main purpose of highlighting the specified provisions in the JPA in that agreement is to provide your board with the information of some of the more, what my office considers to be more of the important provisions, more applicable provisions for your board's consideration in deciding whether or not to sign on to this JPA or a participant. That is the main general purpose of this, and you can see it in these 10 items, which, you know, some of them may be points of ambiguity, some of them are actually to highlight some of the advantages of entering into the JPA. So I could walk through them with your permission, Mr. Vice Chair, I could walk through them very briefly to try to see why, on the reasons why I may have highlighted this for your board's consideration, as ultimately it will be up to your board's decision come October 21st to sign up on it. And some of which, actually, it was already brought up by, raised by your board. I'll start with the first point, the title of that. So Supervisor Sabatier rightfully pointed out that there is a distinction between parties and participants. The heading of the agreement specifies, quote unquote, "by and among" this County of Sonoma and Sonoma County Water Agencies, they're identified as parties, and that is to be distinguished in their definition section by what, who is a participant. So that is more of an ambiguity issue. I think in terms of function, all of these are, all of the entities signing on to this contract are subject to the obligations designated by the entities of the contract, whether they're designated for parties or participants, they're all specifically referenced here. And so that was the whole point of raising that provision, too, to point out that potential ambiguity, because the heading itself is just by two agencies, when as a matter of fact, there are plenty of other participants in that contract, in this JPA. So 2.5 expressly states that the power of the authority is subject, this is item two, power of the authority is subject to the restrictions upon the manner of exercising power possessed by the Sonoma County Water Agency. That section also cites, I believe, a government code section that is 6509, which actually provides the restrictions upon the manner of exercising power possessed by not just one party, but all of the parties and participants, I believe, in that, of that contract. And I could double-check that with you. So again, that's another potential point of ambiguity. If you could, let me just have a moment. So then I'll move on to section three, which actually states that when, if a participant who has not agreed to assume an authority debt liability shall not be responsible, shall not assume an authority debt liability or obligation, and shall not be responsible in any way for such debt liability or obligation. That is one of the highlighted sections when it comes to if, if the county were to decide to become a participant here, and they have not agreed to assume a debt imposed on an authority, they shall not be responsible for it. So that is one of the debt obligations, debt provisions provided for by this JPA that presumably would be advantageous for a participant. And just for clarification, jumping back to number two, it actually references, government code 6509 specifically references, and I quote, "Such power is subject to the restrictions upon the manner of exercising the power of one of the contracting parties, which party shall be designated by the agreement." It goes back to that issue or potential issue under items one and two regarding the distinction being made between party and participant, because 6509 and the government code applies to the restrictions in the manner of exercising power by a party, but the agreement itself makes a distinction between a party and a participant. And if the County of Lake were to sign on in this JPA, it would be as a participant, not a party. So that was one of the reasons, again, going back to number two, why I have highlighted that provision. I believe we're on item number four.
So Lloyd, it would be really helpful to also hear your, how you would advise us with these segments that you pulled out that give you concern.
As I've said, these are not necessarily points of concern.
Right.
These are highlighted points that may, may raise some ambiguities, possible risks, but also some other points that may be highlighted that would be advantageous for the county if they were to sign on.
Right.
I believe I made that preface statement.
Yeah.
At the beginning. It's not just all about risk on this one. I just pointed out item number three, which is not a risk issue in my, in my particular view, because it's a debt obligation that's actually, an authority, references authority debt liability that, that the participant would not be responsible for. So I don't see a risk issue in that, but that is a highlighted provision that your board may consider if your board were to decide to become a participant in this JPA.
If there's something that really gives you heartburn, will you let us know? Because that's what I'm really looking for, is understanding clearly, like I get, I understand everything you've said, but as we go through this, if there's something that you can advise us on, that would be helpful.
Well, yeah, so just generally speaking, to the extent that there would be legal advice that would be subject to attorney-client privilege, for one thing, so I'm trying to keep it in more general terms, certainly touching on areas of risk, but not necessarily making recommendations of whether or not something should be, something should be entered into by your board, because ultimately that would be up to your board's decision. My position here only allows me, my purview only allows me to provide the board with highlighted provisions so that your board can then make an informed decision, in this case, come October 21st, based on these highlighted provisions and beyond that, because I know there were other documents uploaded in, in Granicus with the proposed resolutions, two of them, and the ordinance as well. So if I could proceed further with this? So if I could proceed further with this, with the other items, I believe we're on item, item number four, which references section 4.7, which generally just allows the Board of Directors of the JPA to determine whether a municipality as a participant or whether they could appoint an additional member to the Board of Directors. So that's more of a generalized, you know, ability of the Board of Directors, or what the Board of Directors of the JPA can do. So without getting into detail under item number five, under section 4.7.3, it does get into when the weighted voting shares are applied. And that's, I think Supervisor Sabatier alluded to that. For a clarification was made though, on, on Sonoma Clean Power's response when it comes to the voting shares. And so clarification on the last part of item five, I feel should be made, that in calculating what voting shares, the reference to the county of Lake, City of Cleric, and the city of Lakeport, where it would have, shall have two, it's actually two seats is what's being proposed, not voting shares. The voting shares are actually, under the calculation would be more than that, once you apply the calculation, I think Sonoma Clean Power has provided those estimated voting shares. Item number six, it just designates a Sonoma County Auditor Controller, Treasurer-Tax Collector as the Treasurer and the Auditor for the Authority should the county join, decide to join as a participant to this JPA. So the access to that information would obviously come from the Sonoma, from the Sonoma County Auditor Controller and Treasurer-Tax Collector. 5.1.2, I believe, references the implementation plan. The latest version of that, I believe, is, has been uploaded in Granicus. It just provides the obligation of the Authority to approve an implementation plan. And, and it also requires your board's authorization, that's referenced in these resolutions, should the board decide to be a member of this Authority. Seven, under item number eight, 7.1.1 allows for a participant in this JPA to withdraw upon six months with advance written notice. However, I believe it was already discussed quite substantively in the prior meetings that despite, with the, with the six months advance written notice to withdraw, the participant may be subject to either a waiting period or the penalties. That was covered by a certain monetary penalties if they don't decide to do a waiting period. So that's for your board's consideration as well. Section nine gets into, or section 8.2 under item nine of the memo, gets into the indemnification and holding harmless, which the Authority does agree to indemnify and hold harmless the individual, current former directors, officers, and employees for any acts and commissions in the scope of their employment. And finally, on item number 10, 8.3, would apply those indemnification and hold harmless provisions by the Authority to indemnify and hold harmless the parties and the participants. I believe that was also alluded to by Sonoma Clean Power at the last workshop on September 30th.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for bringing up the development agreements, Ben. And it's a conversation I had with you and, and County Council, making sure, and I think Sonoma Clean Power mentioned it in one of their letters, we really need to make sure that when we're, if there is a, an opportunity from a developer that's presented to us, that we hold the authority to negotiate that development agreement and find those public benefit projects. That had been really, really important, especially in my district. We have really benefited from projects, from the royalties. There's, there's been a lot of things that have really bolstered up my community because of these old contracts. But I want to make sure that going forward, because I don't think that we've taken enough advantage of development agreements. And going forward, we really need to, to look at that more closely because there's a lot of opportunities. And I think that there's been times we've left things on the table. So if we're looking for something that we really want to do, we just hold on to that and we wait for these developers to come and we're, and we negotiate that into one of our agreements. And I think that's how we start to implement some of the priorities that we just simply can't fund right now. And Lloyd, I think you had some recommended language for me to add that to the geozone resolution. And I have to, you have it? Okay.
Yeah, it was in the email that I sent out. So it would be in the resolution because quite frankly, I didn't find it to fit in any of the other documents. I know we, there was some discussion of that, on whether or not it could be applied. But since it applies to essentially potential projects that would occur within the designated geozone area, that language would be, the proposed language is, would be to add a section three to the geo, I would just call it the geozone resolution. There was only two proposed resolutions here and that would be the resolution pertaining to the geozone. And that section three would state that notwithstanding the foregoing, any proposed development of geothermal energy located in the jurisdiction of the county shall be subject to the county's review and approval under chapter 21 of the Lake County Code, which would be the Lake County zoning ordinance.
Okay, great, thanks. So I hope we can consider adding some language there. And then, oh, sorry.
No, I just have a question when you're done.
Okay. And then just one more point of clarification. The cities were not asked to join the geozone, is that correct?
That's correct.
And really, there's no area of their jurisdiction where there would be geothermal development, correct?
Highly improbable based on current information.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So just a quick question on the language that Lloyd just read. So what I'm looking at the resolution right now in section two, where it talks about the county joins the geozone with the understanding and based on the warranty that SCPA will not propose new geothermal projects within the county's current setback. So is that language in addition or replacing or?
It would be added language to section three.
Okay, so this would stay like it is and that would be added?
Yes.
Potentially.
Yes, on, on this added language.
Okay.
Issue.
Okay. Supervisor Owen.
Thank you. I do have some concerns. Of course, I feel that we're kind of selling out a little short with what is being offered right now. And much like, I believe it was Sterling had mentioned that, that we have these valuable resources and how are we going to benefit from that? I'm looking, the, what they're offering right now as far as them supplying us the power, they're basically a middleman. And it's kind of a wash with the exception of, I mean, sometimes they're a little higher, sometimes they're a little less, but it's basically a wash with the exception that we're tied in for 20 years and not from the time that we start with them, but 20 years from the date that we want out. So once we decide we want out, then we're in a 20-year contract or it could be millions. Furthermore, they were able to give us the, how much it would be to buy out. That was a huge issue for me. So in order for me to support this, and mind you, I'm all about power, energy, geothermal, I'm all about it. But I think that we need to push this out just a little bit so we can, we need to get a better deal, whether, what we're going to do to be able to, to make profit or where the county can benefit from our resources. And that's basically what Sterling had mentioned. And I had just spoke with Mr. Tom Lasik earlier outside and he had mentioned some ideas on that as well. If our residents can get a guarantee that the energy that they're bringing from the geothermal at a discounted price, enough to make it worth, worth us doing it, but those are resources that we need to, the county needs to somehow benefit from. I was upset many years ago when many of the plants were built on the Sonoma County side because they're taking our, much of ours, they don't have as, quite as much of the geothermal, but they're able to use that, but Sonoma's actually benefiting from that. We need to be able to benefit from it here. I know in the meeting, I actually pushed, pushed kind of hard on whether or not they would be interested in taking on Potter Valley Reservoir if we're able to get some of the issues cleaned up, which I think we will be able to. I got a yes answer. I just, I wouldn't be willing to sign on without something where we are somehow benefiting. Our county, our people are somehow benefiting. That's it.
Anything further?
Let me see, let me check my notes. No, I got that in, I got that in, so I think I'm good.
So one of my concerns with what we're focused on today was, thank you for bringing it up, that we want to try to ensure that our setback zone that our county has created years ago is respected. So I, I'm definitely in agreement with that language in there. The concern that maybe a lot of people don't realize is that with the current state law, somebody could come in and propose a project tomorrow that's, that's within the boundary of that, our own setback. And if it's a project that falls within state authority approval, the state doesn't have to honor our, our setback, our ordinance, they do not. So that could be approved, you know, in theory, something like that could happen. So I think I wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about that because I'm not sure if everybody in the public realizes that. I know, you know, we've had, I would say, a limited or a small amount of folks that have come to us, that have spoke at these previous meetings or sent us messages, you know, with the concerns about how future geothermal development might look and how it might affect our, our environment. And, you know, I'm in full agreement that we want to, I mean, the environment here in the county is, is important to me. I want to make sure that anything we do in the future, that our environment is respected and that we don't harm that, I think that's highly critical. But at the same time, you know, whether we're involved or not, I think that further geothermal exploration is going to happen, whether we're involved in the conversation or not. It's, it's going to come forward. And I think the benefit that I see to us being involved in an agreement such as this, if this were to go forward, is that we are part of that conversation. We're part of a government authority that is potentially looking at, you know, good future projects for our county. And so by being involved, I think we're going to have more ability to put input in and kind of, you know, guide and move those projects toward what benefits, what protects our environment while also benefits our county. Because we do have to realize that, you know, some development is, is necessary, I mean, to, to move our county forward. I mean, there's, there's certain things that we need to look at, we got to provide jobs, we got to take care of our economy, all those things have to be balanced out. And I feel like if we're more involved in it, we're going to be able to push the right projects. And also, if we're involved in, in this, there's no projects even on the table, so you can't really say what it looks like. I see it as a conversation or a, a start of a process to where we're going to be able to go out and ask our members of the public what, you know, what they think is, is right. We're going to get input from them. And I think that's what I feel like Sonoma Power has said, I've heard that several times. I feel like they're going to be committed to that. So that's kind of where I fall. I do want to make sure that everything's done right to protect our, our county. We've got rich resources here and, and, and that's where, you know, we really want to consult with the tribes too, is if we're developing a project, then yes, we need to be talking to them and getting their input. I'm all, all in agreement with the more communication with the tribal communities, the better. But on, you know, I don't necessarily see right now where we could have really, I mean, I guess we could have done better in talking to them about these meetings and stuff maybe, but, but they are members of the public too. And I feel like we, we put out a lot of public information. Anyone was, was welcome to come to meetings. We were at every town hall, we were at boards and city councils. But I'm in agreement that, you know, if we move forward, we've got to get the tribes involved, talk to them. In particular, I think the most critical discussion with them is going to be about where projects go and if it's, you know, tribal ancestral land, then we definitely want their, their feedback. From what I've been hearing out in the public, unfortunately, people that don't oppose a project or that are, that are in favor of it are not going to come in here by the masses and talk to us and give comment. They're, they're not going to do that. But what I've been hearing and discussing with folks is, you know, they want at least to have the opportunity to have another choice on power. And they also think it's important that we be involved in the conversation on future geothermal projects. And if we leave ourselves out, you know, they have some concerns there that we're not involved. So that's kind of where I'm at. And lastly, I do want to, you know, I'm going to have to look to County Council because I'm not sure, you know, how the paperwork's got to be adjusted or framed when we get to the 21st because we're potentially voting on something that we don't technically have an offer on the table right now. I mean, we do, but, but based on how the offer reads, with Clear Lake voting no, that kind of changes the circumstances where I, I'm not sure what that looks like. But I did talk to County Council about that and, you know, that's something that's going to have to come up on the, the 21st if, you know, we, we get to that point. But, and I think that's all I had at this point. I'm, some, did somebody else, oh, your pen's up, I'm sorry, again.
No, I'm absolutely in agreeance that, and like I said, the geozone is something I'm interested in. I just want to make sure that we have the best deal possible for that. For me, it's, it would be easier if we separated out the two, the, them providing power and the geozone. The geozone I can get behind as long as we have a good and fair deal. But we need, just need to make sure that, that our, that we're benefiting, that we're doing what's right for the county and our people. As far as the power, them supplying the power, I, I'm not feeling really good about that in the essence that I, I just, I don't like getting locked into 20 years and I don't feel that that's a really good deal for us at this moment. It's kind of a wash, except for the 20-year. So, and, and also furthermore, as I had mentioned at the other meeting, is if something else comes along as far as us getting, with technology coming forward or perhaps with the dam, if we need to do something about electricity and we want to start doing something here within Lake County, I don't want to close that door either.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Oh, I, I think I was, I just wanted to respond. Yeah, that's all right. Because I just, you know, I heard Supervisor Owen's comments and I, I agree. You know, we need to make sure that we're getting the best deal and you and I both know.
It's in our districts.
It's in our districts and, and we understand probably better than anybody the benefit. And, and that's why I'm looking to add some more language so that we're in control.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, of, of those developments. I do not, I didn't want to be remembered as the board that let this go. Because of the, because of the, the, the long-term effects of saying no to a deal like this, it is a package deal. No deal is ever perfect, but the, we do have the ability to negotiate what's best for us. And on the power choice side, I, I hear some people say that a few percentage points is not enough. But that might be for a residential bill. What about for our businesses that have a three or four or $5,000 a month bill? I want them to have the choice. Because we have so many conversations in Kelseyville with our downtown businesses and I see Weston's here, so I hope we can hear from him. All of my businesses in Kelseyville are just screaming. They are having to shut the doors because... They are having to shut the doors because these utility bills are so high. And we will never, ever, ever in a million years have a seat at PG&E's table. So if we don't have this choice, then we're always going to be beholden to whatever it is they do to make sure their shareholders benefit from what happens here in Lake County. And that's, that's what I really want to stay focused on is making sure that we have that choice for our constituents. Because the power needs are growing, as Ben just showed us, with these data centers that are going to consume all of the energy that's available. And it is going to make all of our rates continue to climb. And we have really small businesses here that don't have a margin to sustain themselves on, on these rates that just keep going up and up. So I, you know, I know we're talking, we're, our conversation today is about these documents and the comments that we've asked for and the comments that we've asked for around economic development too, so that we have a lot more information to make an informed decision. Um, so I, I do, I know we have some members of the public here, I do want to hear from them, um, but that's.
Can I say, can I respond to that really quick? The, um, originally we were talking about just the power and that's when they attached the geozone. I didn't know that they wouldn't do the geozone without the power. I don't think we've asked about that, just for clarification, I don't, right? Is that correct?
Well, from what I recall, when they, we had the conversation last spring and Jeff was here, we asked that question. Because this has been a conversation that's been going on for a really long time. They came to us, well, I think we have someone here that could probably speak to the history. We've asked multiple times to, to be allowed to enter Sonoma Clean Power. Since I've been on the board, they came to us and asked if we would join the geozone, and I think that was 21 or 22, was several years ago. And they said, please, you know, we're, we're forming the geozone, please, please sign and be a part of it. And at that point, I said, I want to see on your board. And they said, no, because you'll be making decisions for rate pairs in other areas. And, and we said, okay, well, we want to join Sonoma Clean Power so that our residents can have the benefit of the power that is generated in our county right now. Because right now, we don't get any of that power. It goes out of county other places. So those are the things that we asked for. And then they came back and Jeff made the presentation to join Sonoma Clean Power. And the question was brought up, do we have to join the geozone? And at that point, I think that he said he didn't know. That, he said, the board is going to make that decision. And so that was kind of a timing thing. I don't, you know, I've heard it being called a bait and switch. I don't believe that's true because I don't think that the board had put together the offer at that point. So we just didn't know.
And that's correct. When the, it went in front of the board, that's how the offer was formed. When it went to Sonoma Power Board, is when they, that board made that decision. Supervisor Sabatier, I believe you had?
No.
Okay. Do we have anything further from the board before I open it to the public? Doesn't appear so. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public comment and for anybody in the room first. And please state your name for the record and we'll have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Denise Rushing from Upper Lake. And actually, I'm speaking first as a subject matter expert, just to answer a few questions, then I'd like my three minutes to start. Sonoma Clean Power is going to want to do geozones. That's one of the reasons they have approached Lake County. And they asked me a, a long time ago, what it would take for Lake County to be interested in helping figure out what geozones were and how it would work. And I said, at minimum, from my perspective, the citizens of Lake County need to benefit from the energy. And I'll explain why when I give my public presentation. But they will want to do it, as will anybody else. And as far as a seat at the table, you have the seat which is approving the, the projects, unless the state takes that away from you. You have that seat always, no matter who is developing geothermal. You don't sit at the table for Chevron, you don't sit at the table for Shell Oil, you don't sit at PG&E's table, and PG&E is a supplier of last resort. They're really not interested in developing generation projects. They just have to have a portfolio because they are required to. And it require, and it's a lot of risk on their part. As a matter of fact, they like being the pipes and wires company because they know they'll get their money back. So all those other corporations that might come in to develop a project in Lake County, we don't, we Lake Countyans don't sit at that table and we don't get benefit. That project, that, that energy is exported and we don't get it. So that's kind of the, the context of the situation. And we've been at this for, I would say, two decades, but certainly one decade with talking about how we might form our own community choice aggregation and take advantage of the fact that community power is really valuable. The Navajo Nation, by the way, did, you know, solar as their community power and they were able, because they didn't have to pay their grid for energy, they were able to fund schools and programs for their people. So there's a lot of money in it. A lot of money leaves our economy, out, our region, based on, in, in energy. In fact, when the study was done, we did local economy, circular economy studies, food was one, durable goods was another, but energy was the big one. That's the money that goes out the door. It doesn't stay in Lake County unless we have projects here. So that's my, you know, I'm happy to be the subject matter expert on some of this. I have a 40-year career in the energy industry and I really worked hard as a board of supervisor member to try to get as lo, much localization of energy as we could. We really did explore a lot of different things, including coming up with our own projects. And the best we could do at the time was to develop, develop solar at county facilities. We couldn't really pull the money together or the expertise together to play as a CCA on our own. So if you don't mind, I'll come back during public input.
Uh, public comment, do we have anybody in the room? You come up and state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Weston Seifert. I have the Saw Shop Public House in Kelseyville. Um, I'd like to start by saying I'm, I'm really thrilled that we're having this conversation. For me, I kind of started down this journey in 2024, um, and I think it was the, um, spring and summer of 2024, where I saw my energy bills from PG&E, um, you know, top out at $8,000 a month. And that was during a month, or that was during months that I had declining sales. We did not get any tourism last year. Um, and I'm watching, uh, other business owners like post on Facebook and kind of shouting into the void, like, I'm paying $5,000 a month for power. I don't have the sales, I don't have any way to do this. PG&E, blah, 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 right? Um, and, you know, so I, I, I'm thrilled that we are having this robust discussion. It is so, so vital. Um, whether or not it's Sonoma Clean Power or not, I, I don't know. I mean, we, this is part of that conversation to figure out how we move forward. I do believe that we are at a point where no is not an answer, right? It is, we are, it is negotiation, it's figuring out what we need, how our county prospers, how do we get something out of it? Um, but I think, I think putting our heads in the sand and saying no is, is not right. We are, you know, right, definition of insanity, right? We all doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. We expect that PG&E somehow miraculously, their rates are going to come down. That's just not going to happen. We don't have, we don't have a seat on, you know, on the board for PG&E. They don't care. It is, uh, that we are looking at, how do we take control of our destiny? That is where we are at right now. How do we control as a county, our destiny, um, and take care of our citizens and take care of our businesses? You know, it is, you know, for me, as a business owner, I'm in, uh, now three years of declining sales. My sales, uh, from 2022 to current are, um, down about 25%. My PG&E bills, on the other hand, are up about 20%. That is not a sustainable trajectory. And if you talk to your other business owners, I guarantee they're all in the same boat. We are not, this is not a, it's not a sustainable trajectory. I think having, again, having robust discussion, figuring out how we navigate this, um, I will tell you, I mean, there has not been any other solution that I've heard of. I mean, I don't see other, uh, other businesses or other corporations with, coming in with solutions to be able to support Lake County. So, I mean, it's a, everything, everything comes with risk. But in 20 years from now, will we still be where we're currently at or will we have grown? And that is, you know, I, I do all of this for my kids, it doesn't impact me, it may impact my kids, uh, but it's for my grandkids and for my, you know, our, our collective kids and families to be able to have a place to stay and grow and, and have opportunity in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Tom Lasik. I also want to thank everybody for the robust discussion, excuse me, robust discussion and the clarification on some of the legal terms that are in the, in the, uh, the language. I, I think we can do better. A seat at the kiddy table is not true involvement and it certainly isn't control. And the model that is being presented by Sonoma Clean Power, um, is essentially that, where we will be underrepresented. Uh, saying that you're going to, well, we'll go talk to the tribes, that's not tribal involvement, that's more like tokenism. And it's actually quite insulting to, for Sonoma Clean Power to do that. Uh, I empathize with all the people that are complaining about PG&E's skyrocketing rates, and they are skyrocketing and there's, it's, it, it's unconscionable that it's happening. But Sonoma Clean Power themselves says, don't, we can't guarantee that we're going to do any better. And the, the, how much better they've been able to do is, is quite marginal. It's been a distinction without a difference. So what it boils down to really is the geozone conversation. And in the hearing, um, and I believe Jeff was sincere when he says geozones were off the table. In the findings of his feasibility study, he suggested putting it on the table and his board told him, yeah, put it on the table. And since then, the conversation around geozones has gone from being something, oh, don't worry about it, don't worry about it, it's no big deal, to it's really the big deal that our community is very concerned about. Nobody here is against geothermal. It's how it's being managed, how it's being done. And I think you've heard over and over again that people are tired of our power going out and then us not getting enough of the revenue. There are other models. Sonoma Clean Power isn't the only CCA that's out there. There are other ways to do this, um, that are better, I think, for the community. And I think the red flags are there. There, there, every week or every time you have a conversation with Sonoma Clean Power, you find out something they said wasn't true. Now we found out that, uh, you know, uh, the Sonoma, uh, uh, water and power, whatever they call themselves, is now in control. We've already given our Yolo, uh, our water rights and now we're going to give Sonoma our elect, our geothermal rights. That should have been upfront, they should have been transparent. And the red flags aren't getting less and less, they're getting more and more. You know, they said, well, it's going to be 20, $50 million if you, if you opt out. And then in the last meeting, they said, well, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, not quite sure. Uh, then they said, well, we want you to commit to an idea of a geozone. None of that is clear. So I suggest that we're not, this is not the best deal for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Turner?
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Rayler Citizen. Recently, uh, my friend Kirk and I were at Ukiah at this really, really yummy restaurant and he wanted to try to convince the owner to move into the vacant slot in Kelseyville so Kelseyville can become like the restaurant destination. And she said that she can't afford to. She can't afford to go to another community that's any smaller than Ukiah because they're just barely making it there. And her number one reason was the PG&E rates that keep going up. And we've seen doors close on all of our main streets due to that exact reason as well. And I know that me, as a regular person, when I go home, I keep buying these new appliances that are supposed to be better for energy, but it doesn't matter because PG&E's rates keep going up. So, you know, for a while it was breaking even, but now it's going up again. Community Development Department will maintain, uh, oversight of discretionary use permits for power generation facilities unless or until the state takes that away. And we are fully equipped and able to deal with that. I would really love to be able to take a look at a choice. You know, how often do we ever get a choice? I've worked with a, a member of the board on Sonoma Clean Power for years through the League of California Cities and endless stories over years about what a great thing that has been for their community. I'd love to be able to see if it's an option for ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the Zoom room first, Johanna? Hang on, hang on Denise, I'm going to go to Zoom for a minute. Sterling, if you can unmute and go ahead and you can address us?
Yes, um, I definitely want to say thank you to Bruno. I definitely agree with you, this definitely needs to be stopped. So, Lake County is not like any other county in California. We sit directly above Clear Lake Volcanic Field, the living magma system that powers the geysers, which is the largest geo, geothermal complex in California and one of the largest in the entire world. With that volcanic field, without that volcanic field, there would be no geothermal steam, no calpine plants and no renewable energy flowing across the state. Lake County's resources is our legacy and we must defend it. Now, Sonoma Clean Power is back on the agenda despite the city council voting no and the eastern town hall submitting a letter confirming that the community did not want it. If Sonoma Clean Power is truly a nonprofit, why did public records say otherwise? The CEO makes over $500,000 a year, that's up 30% from 2022. Um, the manager director of the power is making $42,000 a year, chief operating officer is making $437,000 a year. These are public numbers, Transparent California's 2024 Salary Report. Meanwhile, customer accounts have stayed flat nearly $231,000 since 2021, yet Sonoma Clean Power's revenues jumped from $218,002,22 to $275,002,23. They still posted a $19 million operating surplus in '24, even after transferring $56 million into a rate stabilization fund. Let me explain that, that, what that means. According to the C, the SCP's own audit, they actually made about $75 million in surplus last year, but they moved the $56 million into a fund so the books would only show $19 million in profit. They called it a rate stabilization account, but in reality, it's an internal reserve that hides the full profit picture. Um, Lake County's greatest treasure, treasure is Clear Lake itself, one of the oldest natural lakes in North America. We do not need to fill our scenic hillsides with solar panels and wind turbines. We already rejected the Walker Ridge Wind Turbine Project and for good reason. And no, this, and not discussing these plans with our Native American people is shameful. This land is even more sacred to them than it is to us. Their voices must be a part of every conversation about the future. Lake County already leads California and much of the world in clean renewable geothermal power. Let's keep that energy local, accountable and secure on the, in the community that lives above the volcanic that powers it. Because without Clear Lake Volcanic Field, there would be no geysers and without Lake County, there would be no geothermal for California. So I want to make sure that that's very clear to you guys. I also emailed all the board members, um, the information that I've came. Um, I have talked to small business owners in Sonoma County, they do not like Sonoma.
Sterling, I'm, I'm going to let you go a little bit over because that's what I've been doing, but just keep that in mind.
Okay, I'm going to go, I'll make it very clear. I have talked to people in Sonoma County that are small businesses. They said that this has not helped them, Sonoma Clean Power did not help them in any way, shape or form. So I really hope that you guys do take this into account and take into account that a lot of the community members from Lake County do not want Sonoma Clean Power and we'd rather keep our own geothermal. money here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sterling. And is there anybody other hands in Zoom?
Angela.
When you, I'm going to go to Zoom another time. Hang on. I'm Zoom. Yeah, yeah, if you could hang on. Guest, guest. Sorry to not, not be more clear on that. Guest, guest, if you can go ahead and unmute and address the board.
Thank you, Board. And thank you for having this conversation, Angela Erma. So first, I want to say that I agree with Supervisor Sabatia about Sonoma Clean Power not being completely transparent. Sonoma County Water's involvement is a significant concern. Also the lack of transparency about AB 531 and, and Sonoma Clean Power's involvement. Supervisor Piska, you mentioned that PG&E will, will always be sure that their stakeholders are making a profit and rates will, their rates will continue to rise, which I believe is true. In Mr. Rickelman's presentation, one of the things that didn't get brought up, it addressed potential increases, but it didn't discuss increasing distribution charges. As customers leave PG&E for other programs like Sonoma Clean Power, distribution charges are certain to rise. This could create a situation where Sonoma Clean Power becomes more expensive than PG&E, as they have little to no control over the distribution charges. With regard to the geozone, I kind of see this as putting a cart before the horse. In order to protect the county's interests and resources, we need to create a strong expectation and vision for alternative energy production in the general plan and local area plan revisions that are currently being conducted with the Lake County 2050 Plan. Conversations about joining a geozone should be conducted after the 2050 general plan and local area plans are completed and adopted. I don't feel that this is a decision the county needs to make right away. According to Jeff Seifert, Sonoma Clean Power would be open to trying again or postponing the vote. It would only push the start date out a little further, but they would rather have all parties comfortable with the agreement rather than having a split decision. So I just wanted to pry that. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. And is there anyone else in Zoom? No more hands in. I let folks go over a little bit because I told you you could
Yeah, thank you.
speak longer, so if you can try to keep that in another minute.
I do appreciate that. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you to the board. You're asking very good questions. And I do appreciate that very much as a citizen, but also as somebody who has really cared about this project a great deal. I am aware that this is a complex matter. So I've tried, tried to put it into two buckets here. There's two decisions that need to be made. Or actually, let's start with the generation. There's two ways we can benefit from the generation here in Lake County. One is at the approval of the projects, which we get no matter what. Whether you say yes to this or not, we get to look at those projects and, and negotiate those deals until the state preempts us, which could happen, as has happened in large solar projects, for example. So that's one way, is that at the project level. The second is, the energy can stay local because we are participating in the local generation of it. Whether we have tribes proposing projects to Sonoma Clean Power, or whether we propose projects, or whether Sonoma Clean Power develops projects, and they happen to be on the Lake County side of the line because there's some benefit to having them over here. Those things can, the energy from those projects, if it goes to Sonoma Clean Power, and you said yes to this, that the citizens would benefit from those rate reductions. Now, there were a number of comments that people have made in the last couple of meetings that are, there's just so many misconceptions and things that are just incorrect. It would take a long time for me to go through the whole list, but part of what I'd like to do is a little bit different right now, and to just try to convince Bruno and the citizens that spoke against this to actually change their minds.
Okay, we're going to need you to wrap up quickly.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll focus on the two or three that most matter here. Let's just wait, is one of them. We can get a better deal from SCP, that may be true. Or you could get no deal from SCP, and then you'll be, you know, just as we always have been, without a choice here. So if I go real quickly through the
Was that one minute?
Yeah, the geozone is not a project, it's a conversation.
We're going to have to wrap up, Denise.
Okay.
I thought I gave her one more minute.
I, I thought I got three minutes as a citizen and then three as an expert.
Well, she, but she wasn't part of our presentation.
Okay.
And I wasn't aware of that.
Well, I will, I'll write up a white paper for y'all, but there's a series of six or seven misconceptions, things that are absolutely not true. For example, PG&E does not, they're not in the generation business. They're in the pipes and wires business.
Yes.
So when they lose generation customers, they're actually kind of glad because they don't take the risk on the spot market for us.
I think, send us another email. Thank you. Go ahead, Margot, if you could state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. Thank you for this opportunity to air out concerns and aspirations for our community when it comes to energy, because we need energy for growth, we need energy for health. Choice of energy source is good. How can anyone argue about that? As Mr. Seifert, one of our previous speakers noted, this is time to take control of our destiny. And as you heard from the comments from the public, this is a momentous decision, a huge decision on your shoulders, between Supervisor Piska and Supervisor Owen. We recognize that this is the decision of two decades, not just any commitment to Sonoma Clean Power, but how it will change the trajectory of the county, and the businesses, and our children, and our children's children. How survivable will this community be? So, as one of our previous speakers also alluded to, this is a perfect time to give this subject serious consideration, as when we're doing our general plan, as we're working on our local area plans. Let's study this. And I don't mean just kicking the can. Let's set timelines, let's identify deliverables, let's come up with a workable plan, a real plan where Lake County is in the driver's seat to develop its geothermal resources. Not, no, not in my backyard mentality, but let's take control of our destiny. Let's manage our natural resources responsibly. And let's do it for the benefit of Lake County, and keep that energy in the county for the benefit of its residents. I urge you, let's make that general plan work for us. Let's make it work, and the local plans too, so we can protect our lake and have our geothermal setbacks honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Do we have any, any more folks that haven't spoken in the room that wish to speak? Not seeing any. Was there any more in the Zoom room?
No.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back. Close public comment. Bring it back to the board for any further comments or possible direction to staff as appropriate, if there is any. Supervisor Piska?
I'm just, we keep hearing that we're giving away our geothermal rights. And I just want to ask all of you, this isn't happening. That isn't in any of these documents. We are going to be looking, whether we do this or not, at development agreements. Any land use agreement with a power company is going to be with that private property owner. So I, we just keep hearing it, and that is inaccurate information. And as we heard, there are some other misconceptions that keep flying around. So I'm looking forward to your white paper. I think that'll be really helpful. But we do need to do what's best for us. And so I did recommend some language be inserted in the resolution for the geozones to kind of tighten that up a little bit more. So I just wanted to see if there was consensus to have that added.
Supervisor Sabatia?
And I, I agree with your comment. It's kind of like water rights. If you buy a piece of property, and there's water underneath your property, like you put a straw in there, boom, you have access. Nobody owns, we don't even own the rights to geothermal underneath the soils. But what we do own is the rights to vet projects and go through the process, which the state can completely overhaul and will, once there's a desperation for energy. There's also some conversation, and while I appreciate the presentation from Mr. Rickelman, talking about PG&E in the midst of this, I think, makes it really confusing, because it's not going to hurt anybody from being on a CCA. And the 43% or 53% increase is going to happen to, no matter if you have CCA or not, because PG&E is still the bulk of your bill, because that's the delivery portion. You may have 2% to 7%, which is what they were saying. In fact, I think they said we were a half a percent, or they are at half a percent less than PG&E costs for their overall bills, because they don't specifically speak about the generation, they speak about the entire bill. But that's still, you're still going to experience a 50% increase. There, there is a much larger problem. So CCA is not a solution in the sense of my energy bill won't hurt me in the future. No, your energy bill is really going to hurt in the future. We all have to figure out a much better way to do this. I have my reasons for my position here. I'm not all the way off to the deep end where there's no way to come back. Again, with my conversation with Mr. Rothstein, it's been really good to go back and forth, because this is a 20-year investment. And I don't know where we will be in 20 years. I don't know what electricity will look like in 20 years. I don't know if PG&E will have corrupted the system so that these things can't exist anymore in 20 years. It's really hard for me to be 100% on this, but I have more questions than I have current answers. And I also wish that the delivery method was done in, in a different way, because it does seem like there has been a bouncing ball, trying to keep track of what else are you giving me today versus everything being put out upfront and very open. And that may not have been the intention. But yeah, I, I don't disagree that there is some misconception or misunderstanding to this. But don't think this is the solution to eliminating your electricity bill. It may decrease it compared to where it is when it lands, but it's still going to be the same similar problem as it is today.
And it may be a little bit more.
And it's possible that two years out of 10, as was shown, that it might be, I think it was 2% maximum, that they experienced, that it could be more. But yeah.
I do want to see the additional language on our setback in there to protect, you know, with, if, if we move forward with an agreement with Sonoma Power, I want to make sure that that additional language. So that's my opinion. I'm in agreement with that.
I would like to have more, I need more education. I need to know more about it, the ins and outs, to be honest. So I will be looking at it this week. I would love to meet with you. And if you could kind of help guide me a little bit on this, and I'm going to be meeting with other people between now and then. But I need to educate myself more, as far as what we can ask for, what's appropriate, what, what we could be looking at. So I just need to educate myself more on it.
I think, you know, we have the next two weeks to do outreach and talk to folks, and hopefully hear more from community members. And also, you know, Sonoma Power has committed to be available over the next two weeks to answer questions from board members.
I had asked him at the last meeting to meet with them and kind of go over more of the geozone.
With that, is there any further from our board? I think we have, we had consensus on the, the adding in the geo, our setback language. Yes, County Council?
Yes, just wanted to make sure that there is that consensus. I heard from two.
I believe I heard it. I saw it, but.
I think it's better to be there than not be there, so.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's at least three that are
Oh, I'm, I
Yeah, so I think we have all of us that are consensus on that. Just seeking if there's any further direction that the board wants to give to staff at this point, or not hearing any. And I'm going to go ahead and close the item.